Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the Newington Board of Education to order. Today is Wednesday, January 25th, 2017, and the time is now 7:00 PM. We will begin with a pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright. So moving to Agenda Item B, Presentations of Awards and Proclamations, which we don't have any this evening, so we will move right to Item C on our agenda, which is Public Participation. As a reminder, our phone lines are also open, and that number is 860-665-8736. Now if anybody from the public here wants to come forward, now would be a good time. If you could please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Scott Kurskowsky, 46 Miami Avenue. I am the founder and administrator of What's Happening Newington in Newington, online community of close to 6,000 people where you focus on things going on here in the town of Newington. What's Happening in Newington was the birthplace of the concern about the condition of Anna Reynolds by concerned parents. Last night, the town council had a meeting, and I made a plea to the town council to bring Anna Reynolds back on the table, asking for a building community to be formed. I also talked about my concerns over the facts of the lack of basic maintenance being performed at Anna Reynolds. Most of the photos that Dr. Collins posted to the Newington Public Schools Facebook page showed little, showed that a little paint and TLC can clean up many problem areas. I don't want to see the conditions get worse, and it could be five years or more before the Anna Reynolds renovations are complete. Our kids deserve better. This is a blue ribbon school. I know, Dr. Collins, you love shiny things, we all do, but we can't let the school rot until renovations are done. I also find it concerning that our superintendent of schools seems upset that parents are commenting about the conditions of the school. It's my understanding that he has sent out two emails to the Board of Ed members expressing his displeasure about being questioned by parents. I also find it concerning that Dr. Collins has what I call cherry picked the words of parents and residents to make those who express their concerns look like they are the bad guys. I've heard from some parents who are afraid to speak now on school things because they don't want to be picked on by the superintendent. I should note that on January 23rd and 24th, I have submitted a Freedom of Information Act request to Dr. Collins, and as of this time, I have not received a response that has been received, nor ever received the information I have requested. It's time, Dr. Collins, you stop blaming everyone and take responsibilities for the issues of the school you control. It is not my fault, or any concerned parent's fault, that the schools are in the condition they are in. As you said in your emails and on your After the Bell TV show, that you don't want to spend $50,000 per bathroom to renovate them. I have not seen a single parent ask you to remodel the bathrooms, they just want them cleaned up. They want some ceiling tiles that have fallen down to be replaced, and some paint put where it looks terrible. What they are looking for is not unreasonable. I have posted this online, but I'll say it again. If we can get union approval, I personally would be happy to volunteer my time, and we'll have an Anna Reynolds paint party. Let's clean things up for our kids. Now, I understand tonight the Board of Education will be voting, using a single vote, on a number of new rules. I was planning on speaking on a few of them that caught my eye, but in speaking with my council, they said that the laws as written are legal, however, if the law, if the rules are used, they may open up other legal problems for the school board, town, and superintendent. It'd be my recommendation that if you're a Board of Ed member, that if any of the rules concern you, that you are best to vote no for the entire packet tonight. One of the new rules that concerns me that I will speak about is Rule 3523.11, and that is about drones. I myself am FAA registered drone pilot, and enjoy flying my drones at Ruth Chafee School. Flying a drone and shooting video takes a lot of practice to get nice smooth video, so I go to Chafee School to practice. When I go there, I'm normally the only person there. I've sent out a copy of your Rule 3523.11 to a few friends, including one from the FAA, and they all tell me that the rule is 100% unenforceable. I'm told the airspace above any public property is federal airspace under the control and jurisdiction of the FAA, and only the FAA can make rules regarding flying drones in any public airspace. FAA Part 107 is very clear on this, and with the new 333 exemption from the FAA, many of those rules go by the wayside. Just for clarification, Rule 333 is for commercial flying of drones, so you can use your video and make money with it. Since this rule is enforceable, I suggest that Rule 3523.11 be stricken from the docket. Finally, we're coming into budget season. It's my understanding Dr. Collins did an excellent job in managing money given to the school system this year. But it's my understanding he's not spent a penny of the $500,000 set aside to save 15 teachers' jobs, and I also understand that he has not touched a penny of the $1.2 million insurance windfall he received last fall. I know Dr. Collins would love to buy property for a new bus barn, but because everything that's happening in this state, with the anticipated decrease in funding from the state of Connecticut for education, I would hope he put that money towards education, such as adding a new STEM teacher, new Spanish teacher, overbuying new things. That is it, thank you, and have a great night.
Thank you. Would any other member of the public wish to come forward, or would anybody else like to call in at 860-665-8736? You were calling?
No, I thought someone-
Oh, oh, no, nobody's calling right now. If you could give your name and address.
Hi, Dana Havens, 113 Stoddard Avenue. So, I'm one of those parents that their stuff was cherry picked, that Scott referred to. I'm not really that upset, because I know it was an internal memo and it wasn't going out to the public, but I am disappointed. And I don't know if you didn't look at these yourselves, and just got yourself, and just got the information from others, but like the first picture of one of my posts was cut off, and if you look, I actually supported you, and I understood what you were doing. And then today, I was going through to get some more information, and I'm looking, and under that same thread that started this whole thing, four, five, maybe more, because I had to stop because I was getting mad at myself, I kept supporting you. And then, I see that, and I see that you cut my words off, so you don't even see why I supported you. You didn't include any of those posts where I supported you. So, I'm just disappointed. I understand that you want to get things done. I think what you saw when we got upset over the looks of it was some soldiers to help you in your fight to get what you need to fix the school. And then, when things got political, and other people stepped in, and suddenly, the finger was getting pointed at you, and you know, it's like, hey, he helps, or he is the one that decides. You got angry, you got disappointed. And we're paying the price. I think you made a good decision, you thought you made a good decision, you should have stood by it instead of trying to pass the blame. The other thing I wanted to speak on, because now I'm looking at everything, was some of your motions, and there was one 9222. I was hoping it would be here, it's not, and I can't read it on my phone because I'm getting old. It was a part about censure, where you, as a board, if you pass by a two-thirds vote, you can get somebody removed from the board? To me, that's like you're unelecting someone, and I don't believe that that can happen. You can, you know, Robert's Rules of Orders gives you plenty of ways to silence someone, but I don't think you are allowed to actually remove them. And that's it.
Thank you. Any other member of the public wishing to come forward? Please come forward, state your name and address, please.
Yeah, perhaps that might be a short. I live on 21 Spring Street, my name is Pierre LePage, and I thought this meeting included something about the bus, the fast track and stuff like that, and taking over my property. So I just was kind of clarity when it-
Downstairs.
Oh, that's downstairs, alright, thank you.
I know somebody- Anybody else from the public wishing to come forward? Anybody calling in, 860-665-8736? Okay, we'll have another opportunity for public participation towards the end of the meeting, so with that, actually, I have to amend the agenda. I'm going to request that the Board of Education add an additional Agenda item to this Wednesday, January 25th Board of Education meeting. The Agenda item would be an action item entitled "Realignments of the 2016-2017 Budget." The Board of Education Policy 9324 indicates items may be added to the agenda for consideration as part of a meeting by holding a two-thirds vote of those present in voting. So I'm going to recommend that the Board of Education suspend the rules to add this additional item. Would you please make the motion?
Move the Board of Education suspend the rules to add an additional item, action, realignment of 2016 to 2017 budget.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Vasella. Any discussion? I think what we're going to do is I'm going to put it under, we'll put it under New Business. We'll have to wait till the next public participation. Okay, so we're going to put this Agenda item under Item F, under New Business. Okay, sorry. Go ahead, Mr. Sylvia.
I'm sorry, thank you. Is this in accordance with the policies that you were discussing with the town on how we were to use this account, or not use this account, or access this account? We never got any clarification or direction, so I'm trying to understand if our accessing the account and redistributing the monies is appropriate?
Just as a procedural matter, we need to vote to suspend the rules first, then we can, then we can move to add this action item, then we can discuss adding the action item. So we need to, we need to vote first, then the rules are suspended, then we can move to add the action item.
Okay, so we, what have we done so far? Okay, so a vote to suspend the rules. All in favor?
Aye.
Nay, okay, so. Rules are suspended, and now we will move to add the action item under, going to move it to New Business, Section F. Okay, we'll put the item as F number 46. And now-
So moved.
Seconded by Mrs. Ancona. Gosh, for my two lawyers. Any discussion? Now, Mr. Sylvia? Would be a good time, okay.
So my previous question, have we gotten the determination of the guidelines on how this account is to be accessed as such?
Yes, we have that, it's all been worked out with Mrs. Harder. She's comfortable with it, so we do have procedural ways of accessing the account. That's between Lou and Ann, and when it's needed, that's how they handle it.
Alright, so I'll hold the rest of my questions, thank you. I'll hold the rest of the questions when the item comes up for discussion, thank you.
Okay, yep. Okay, so what do we need to do now? We have to-
Vote to add that action item?
Vote, we did-
We didn't yet.
Okay. Do we need to make another motion?
No.
Okay, so just to vote, okay. All in favor of putting it on the-
Aye.
Aye.
Nay? No? Oh, you're all in favor. All in favor. Say aye, everybody's all in favor.
I move we reinstate the rules of the meeting.
Can I have a second? Seconded by Mrs. Ancona, and we are back in our regular meeting? Can I have a vote to move back into our regular session?
You seconded, we're voting.
All in favor, aye. Sorry, okay, we are now on Item D, Consent Agenda. Mr. Vasella, would you like to make a motion to accept the consent agenda?
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Can I have a second? By Mrs. Ancona. Thank you, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Motion passes eight to one. Seven to one, Mrs. Braverman's not here, my apologies. Yeah, you know, Mr. Sylvia, I know that you have some concerns, would you like any of the specific policies taken out, where we can discuss them and vote on them separately, and we can pass everything else?
Wasn't that just to approve the minutes? Yeah, just to approve the minutes.
I'm so sorry, okay, now number two.
No, we're on E.
I'm on, no, we haven't- The policies.
It's not on, it's not listed on our agenda as being part of-
Okay, it's on mine.
I was about to say point of order, it wasn't on the agenda.
Right, sorry, it's on mine, but not on everybody else's.
Mrs. Petronio, there are two agendas, one has it as Item Two, and one does not.
Okay.
We have another agenda? I'm sorry. Alright, I'll catch up.
So the one in our packet is the one that has it now? Because I have two here too.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, so we're gonna-
Okay, so, so the agenda that was sent in our packets-
Yep.
Has, it has the minutes, December 14th minutes, and then a two, approve board policies-
Right.
Under that.
That's what I, alright, and that's what I have.
It was in our packet.
That's what was in our packet originally.
The one that was sent to us this weekend was, the Friday one.
So we have to go through, okay, so you have another, in your white folder, you had another, you had another document, it was called Board Policies, where there's individual- Guys, in the white folder from this evening, we have, do you see the, all the different motions? Okay, so we're going to use that document. And we are on Consent Agenda, Consent Agenda Item Number Two, Approval of Board Policies. Not a consent agenda, we're going to do each one separately.
I'm sorry, we just voted on the consent agenda that I voted no on, which was just for the minutes of the meeting. For the minutes?
Approve the minutes of the December 14th.
Minutes of December 14th. My apologies, okay.
No, that was, that was confusing because of the way I was reading a different agenda. Oh my goodness.
For the record, I voted against-
So we'll do F where it belongs. Okay.
Yep.
Alright, so we'll go, we'll go E, then we'll go, we're going to go, okay. So the approval of minutes is done.
Right.
Okay. My gosh, okay, so I'm going to go to Item E, Old Business, and we're going to do these- Okay, no Old Business, we're going to move on to New Business, Item F. We could do Standing Committee Reports, so we'll start with Curriculum Committee, held December 14th, 2016. Mr. Vasella, would you like to update the board on that subcommittee meeting?
Yeah, at our, at our meeting in December, we discussed the plans, proposals that had been sent in through budget time, beginning of the year. We also reviewed with the Foreign Language Curriculum Director, I think that's the correct title now? World Language Coordinator. And we looked at the foreign language that was happening at the middle school in eighth grade, and got an update on the progress that we were dealing with that.
Any other questions, questions for Mr. Vasella on our curriculum committee? Anybody want anything to add? Mr. Sylvia?
Paul, you got an update, how are the eighth grade program going, as I mean, oh-
Eighth grade program is doing very well, they're pleased with, with the progress that students are making. The concern that we do have is that the current eighth graders had foreign, had Spanish last year. And the year before. They were, so they had been exposed to, to Spanish before this. The current seventh grade and the current sixth grade are not receiving any foreign language. So next year's program, when the current seventh graders become eighth graders, they're going to be coming in with a gap of not using foreign language, not using Spanish for that period of time. So, right now, it seems to be working along well, I think next year will be a bigger tell of what's going to happen.
Thank you, Mr. Vasella. Any other questions, Mr. Sylvia, anybody else? Okay, thank you. Next was an Executive Finance Committee meeting held on January 17th, where we reviewed various budget items and policies that we're going to discuss here this evening, so I'm not going to get into any of those and take up more time, because we will be touching on that. So now, we would love to hear from our student representative, hello?
Hello, how are you?
Good, thank you.
You're welcome. A new year means more progress, and never this more so true than in Newington Public Schools. In school sports, boys' basketball defeated New Britain last week by 29 points, and girls' basketball also defeated New Britain as well. Also, the girls' basketball team beat Northwest Catholic. In addition, in boys' swimming and diving, we are off to a great season. Many members have had best times, and I myself dropped a second off my 100 breast time. Moving away from sports, the music program had a wonderful start to the new year with the NHS Band Concert. In my opinion, it was the most successful in all of my four years at Newington High School. Every member's hard work paid off, and the concert had a wonderful blend of sound. My personal favorite piece for the NHS Jazz Band was Emerald Eyes. The lyin' groove definitely got the audience excited. In addition, midterms are just finishing up, and they went as smooth as ever before. Thanks to my Chromebook, reviewing B.C. calculus problems online was made easy. Students Council is just about to finish its winter break. The midterms and holiday season have made it a little challenging to really coordinate any large events. However, in the works, we have our annual partnership with UConn for the event Husky Song, in which we raise money for Connecticut Children's Medical Center. In previous years, we've held charity dances. However, this year, we plan to take a new route and find some more widespread ways to raise money for the event. Another big event right around the corner is Spring Fest, undoubtedly Communities Outreach's biggest and most important event, in which we and all of Student Council will plan and implement a day of fun for Newington's children to ring in the springtime. DECA is also running full speed ahead for regional competition at the Aquaturf on March 13th. More than 20 of DECA's members are competing for a spot at Nationals in Anaheim, California. Most importantly, Lucas Hool, Allison Madrazo, and Austin Sargent. Respectively, the Board of Ed Rep, Social Chair, and the Treasurer are gearing up for their presentation about the community service project they implemented, organized, and ran. For the project, they found a small orphanage in Haiti, which is recovering still from the damage done by Hurricane Matthew and the earthquake in 2010. They and the DECA chapter were able to raise over $1,000 for the orphanages, as well as clothing items for each of the children, a toy personalized item for each child, and a letter written by a DECA member translated to Creole French by Miss Sanzo's French Three Honors class. Oh, is this on, okay, alright, thought it went off for a second. Everything has been shipped and received, and they also just finished their 30-page paper on the organization and implementation of the project. Looking at the middle schools, I have also witnessed continued success. This can be seen with the John Wallace Middle School Band Concert earlier this month. If you want to see just how well the students sound, you can do so, you can do so through John Wallace website, which provides you with the video recording of the concert itself. Winter concert videos for last month's Elizabeth Green and John Patterson Schools can also be viewed online as well. The year may have just begun, but we are already off to a solid start, and I am certain it will be just as memorable, if not more so, than last year. Thank you.
Thank you. Any Board Member questions? Thank you very much, again, we always appreciate your thorough updates-
You're welcome.
And your enthusiasm, exactly.
It's my pleasure.
Thank you. Okay, let's see. We are going to now move to action, from our reports to our action items under New Business, and we're going to do Action Items 1 through 45. They are all board policies that require revisions due to changes in legislation. And just as a reminder, on December 7th, the Executive Student Policy Committee met and discussed these policies, the committee then provided the board with those policies. It is the procedure that we talk about these at two successive Board of Education meetings, and that's where, how we've landed and arrived at this evening, okay? So I think last time we had much discussion around these, I know there was some talk that, you know, we were rushing through these, I don't think we have, because I think we've discussed them in the prior meetings. So, with that, we will move, we're going to call on all of you to help out with this. Why don't we just go around, is that okay? Does everybody have, Josh, do you have them? No? Yeah, if you turn the page, they were in our white packet, everybody should have a copy. Okay, so we'll start with Jane, and we'll go around the table, okay?
Move the Board of Education approved policy 3523.11, unmanned aerial systems drones as recommended.
Can I have a second? Seconded by Mrs. Guyan. All those in favor? I'm sorry, any discussion, sorry, any discussion? Mr. Sylvia?
Thank you. My research on this is basically, leads me to believe that we're conflicting with the FAA and federal regulations and guidelines, but what troubles me a little bit more is, is that we're, we're writing policies at this detail, that it's drones, next it'll be some other technology, or it'll be, as Robert mentioned previously, radio-controlled automobiles, or other items. I find policies of this granularity to be somewhat troubling and too myopic. I went back and I was reading a lot of the policies we have, and I believe what we have in place today already gives our administrators and school personnel the authority to take care of any item that is, endangers the safety or welfare of our students. So I, what troubles me is, is that we're now down to this level of, you know, the next technology that comes out, say Swarm technology, which is rather new, but I don't know how are we going to write another policy for Swarm? And I also don't know how we're going to enforce it when that Amazon drone comes flying over to drop off my pharmaceuticals from Stop &amp; Shop. So, this, this type of, I'm just not supportive of this level of regulation.
I'm going to let Dr. Collins speak to that, because we've, we've had this discussion, and a lot of this is not written by our board per se, but it's adopted, go ahead, I'm going to let you speak.
These are, these policies are, are recommended by CAPE, of which you are all members, and part of this is, do we have a drone problem? No, we do, however, have an aerospace program that does build drones, and we are in discussions with the insurance company, and so therefore, the board really needs to have somewhat, some sort of policy regarding the airspace over which the schools reside, for insurance purposes as well. The insurance company is a little reluctant to write the policy, we are in negotiations with them now, as are the police department, of course, their use of the drones is very different than ours, however, we do collaborate with the town, and we have one insurance policy, therefore, we are attempting to, to come up with a reasonable insurance rate, if you will, Lou? So the board does need a policy of some sort regarding the drones.
Mrs. Guyan?
Just for clarification, you're looking for insurance for the drones in the program?
No, the, we need to have- No, the, we need to have insurance, uh, just in case we crash or something into somebody, you know, somebody's house, or we do any damage.
Okay, so insurance for the?
Liability insurance.
Right, that, that's the things that are happening in that program.
Right.
And in, in effort to exclude covering everyone in town?
So let's say that somebody goes into our property and flies their drone into somebody else's house while they're on our property. The board has no policy currently. Therefore, uh, that would speak to it, at least. Could be drone, could be whatever you write, whatever it is. But this specific area that we were talking about with the insurance company is specific to drones.
Any further discussion? Mr. Sylvia?
So is the CAPE is recommending this, or is our insurance agent recommending that we have such language or policies in place?
The language that the board uses is taken verbatim from CAPE. It's been vetted by their attorneys. Uh, so that is what, uh, US CAPE members, uh, do, they write your policy. And, um, but the insurance company would not write the policy. Insurance, uh, sorry, yeah, would not write, write your policy, but the insurance company, I don't know if they require, but I think they would be more comfortable if we had a policy. Lou, am I, uh, off base on that? I know you've been having the discussions with them.
Right, the policy is really on two levels, it's the operations of drones on the property by somebody who may or may not be an employee or affiliated with the school district. The policy is written to preclude that activity, uh, from happening by members who, who are people who are not members of the academic community of the school district. The insurance issue is dealing strictly with liability. And the complicating factor is the prevalence of drone use in, uh, public safety operations, where a drone could be used for surveillance at a, um, active shooter situation or other surveillance activities either done by the Police Department or to the Police Department. So in trying to write a policy that limits access to our facilities and saying drone use on our facilities is not acceptable, is really transcending element of this, uh, from a policy standpoint. On the insurance side, uh, the FAA regulations have really a two-tier arrangement. One is called flying for fun, which will allow a teacher to facilitate the operations of the aerospace academy. The next level up is an FAA operator, something like that, where it requires, uh, the individual who is running the operation to only work in exclusive one-on-one arrangement, which is similar to like a commercial setting, you know, a for-profit enterprise. And we really can't move up to that level, because that destroys the ability to have a classroom, uh, situation where if we're running six or seven drones for a class of twenty-five kids, the operator who is the teacher would not be legally allowed to do that. So we're kind of in a developmental phase of the regulations at this point, um, at the FAA, as well as the, uh, insurability issues that are there, because the, uh, company that writes the policy takes on all risks for the town, whether it's Board of Ed or it's, uh, Town Police Operations. And they're just striving to find the right balance at this point. So I think this will be resolved, you know, in the next six to twelve months, but as of today, we don't have that type of, uh, clarity available to us on the insurance standpoint. So, uh, we have, you know, some decisions to make about, you know, the operation of the program, uh, because of, uh, you know, what we cannot acquire for, uh, insurance in the marketplace. Now certainly with the little drones of the one or two pounders that we're using. You know, the real risk is the hazard of one kid flying the drone into the head of another kid, if you think of it. You know, somebody dives somebody and hits them. Uh, I know the, uh, safety operations of the academy have it, where everybody's required to wear goggles during the flight and activities of that type. So I don't see us having really any risk at all, uh, from a liability perspective, uh, right now. It's just if we forced our program to move up to the next level, we would take away our classroom capabilities. And we really don't want to do that. We want to maintain the flexibility of basically staying in the flying-for-fun, uh, arena and let the town side, uh, public safety operation stuff kind of go its own course.
Thank you, Mr. Facella.
The, the side of this that, that does, that I do question for is the, um, the, the privacy of the students. If I was a teacher on recess and someone came and stood by the fence at Chafee or Patterson or any of our schools and had a camera with a telephoto lens and was zeroing in on students on the playground, um, we would immediately deal with that issue because of they're on school property and, and they're not allowed to do that. When we have a drone and, um, you know, I've, I've seen some of the phenomenal work that, and pictures that the drones can take flying over Church, Churchill or, um, Mill Pond. And I, I'm thinking that a drone flying over a playground could really be taking pictures of our students and staff and other things that are going on, um, on our property and on our school grounds. So I, I, that, that's a part that I feel very strongly with this, just from the safety and privacy and security of our students and the schools.
Mr. Sylvia?
Thank you. Uh, Paul, I'm with you on the set, you know, the safety and the thing, but I, I come back to my earlier point. I believe we've already have policies in place that allow us, or allow the, the system, or whatever representative there is, um, to address if someone is, uh, threatening or, uh, or may cause harm to our students, or the privacy side of it. And, and so I'm, I'm struggling, um, though I understand the intent that you have. It's like, what's the next technology that comes out? If it's wristwatches, this is, this is, you know, uh, who knows what's going to be breaking over the next three years? And I, you know, are we going to keep coming back in saying, now we have to add, um, thirty-five twenty-three point one-one-one point two? Uh, you know, for the next technology? I don't want to try to lock us down and say, if I don't have a policy this finite, I can't do anything. Whereas in my readings of the policies we have in place, I think if we keep it vague and at the level that it's at, we can use our common sense to say, hey, you're not allowed on school grounds or for fun or whatever. And from the insurance side, uh, my meetings, that I've been at the insurance meetings, this has not been brought up as a issue that will increase rates or anything of that nature. So, uh, you know, that's why I'm struggling. And that, it's philosophical for me. It's, I'd rather keep it at a higher level and allow the common sense of our administration and teachers and principals to address on the school ground that, excuse me, you're threatening or you're, you're going to, you're threatening the privacy of our students. That, that's my issue, I, I just don't want to get down to this granularity. Thank you.
Ms. Guyan?
I think what they're saying, though, is that we don't have something that allows us to take care of that type of situation. That's what we've talked about in our previous conversations about this, is that there isn't anything in place that would allow for us to take care of that.
I believe there are, am I wrong? That we, do we not have policies in place that allow us to protect the safety and welfare of our students?
We do, not specifically, uh, around the airspace. Doesn't speak to the airspace, and this is something that, uh, CAPE has recommended. Obviously, it's new technology. And, um, will you have to change it in three years? You may, if new technology is developed. I suspect that as CAPE evolves and the technology evolves, that the language will evolve as well. But right now, this is what they are recommending.
So, so Dr. Collins, to my point earlier is then, I'd feel much more comfortable if we had a policy that would add airspace to our existing policies to say it includes the airspace, um, versus us writing this one about drones. Uh, I'd rather just say, whatever comes into our airspace, the policies we have in place are applicable. Uh, versus, you know, I, I, I just think it's too granular.
One of the benefits of, uh, being a CAPE member is you get the, um, CAPE attorneys, uh, who write the policy, uh, around existing law, and it's been vetted. Um, the, the board would, could write its own policy if it shows. You would then need to probably run it through the attorneys to make sure that everything was legal and valid and everything else. Where CAPE, that's what you pay them for, sort of.
Okay, um, oh, go ahead.
No, I, I thank you for allowing me to voice my opinion, um, there's, but, you know, I appreciate the discussion.
Okay, thank you. We're going to move, um, for a vote, um, all in favor, oh, Mr. Tofa, Tofa?
I have a question, is the, this policy for during district activities only? Or full-time?
Yeah, this will be enforced all the time.
Okay, we're going to move to a vote, all in favor?
No, I'm sorry, yes, it's, it's only during school hours and district sponsor activities. So, for example, if you're at John Patterson School on the weekends and there are no school activities, you can fly your drone there.
It, it does say right in the beginning, during school hours and district sponsor, it's right, right in the policy.
Sorry, I'm confusing that with the insurance.
Thank you, Steve. Okay, oh, I know, you don't have them in front of you. Right, you didn't have it, you don't have the policy. Right, right, no, okay, no problem. Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? One. Motion passes seven to one. Josh, number two.
Okay, try this again, move the Board of Education approved policy three-five-four-two-point-two-two, food service personnel code of conduct as recommended.
Can I have a second? Seconded by Mr. Facella, any discussion on number two? Mr. Sylvia?
I apologize. Philosophically, I have the same argument on this as I did with the drones. I believe that it's, it, it's targeting one work group, uh, and if this is applicable to all service personnel of our, um, system, I would be more inclined to approve it, but it just sounds like we're targeting one little group. And I'm at a loss of why we're micro-targeting. Again, I, I, I brought this up in our discussions. I thought we had policies that handle all employees. And, um, I, you know, are we going to have another one for custodial and another one for, um, electricians? You know, I'm going down the line, so it's, I, I'm questioning why the micro-targeting right here on this, but one particular group of individuals?
Is it Lou or Steve want to, go ahead?
What's unique about Newington is we actually run our own food service operation. Ninety-five percent of the districts or ninety percent of the districts use contracted operations. This really is in reference to issues associated with, uh, with the contract districts and the contract awarding process.
This is actually a law, this is required, this is, this is not an optional policy, this is, this is required.
Right, but, you know, we're not really in the same circumstances as most of the other school districts in, in the state.
This would be required of all, all school districts, this is not just us, we're, this is not our coming up with this. This is, uh, something that is required that we implement.
Right, we're not trying to create a contract of brokering out the entire food service operation to a Whitfers or Chartwells or anything like that. I mean, the only contract, contracting we're doing is buying, you know, perishables for the foods themselves.
So?
So it really doesn't have any bite as far as, uh, in our operation, because our circumstances are different.
So I, I, I do under, thank you, I do understand the rationale behind it, but I'm, I'm, I'm asking why the micro-targeting? Why isn't it this particular policy, code of conduct, applicable to everyone in our system?
And it, this is, uh, we don't, I don't know, the answer to that is, I don't know, this is a required, uh, policy that the legislature has, uh, passed, so we, um, I would say take it up, but with the legislature, uh, we have to do, this is a policy that is required of us.
So I mean, so Lou, the way I'm reading this is, is that what's to preclude a, and I, I apologize to the custodial team, this is a good example. But what's to preclude the custodial team from somebody to go in and borrow a baking sheet pan, which would be in violation of this policy? You know, that they took equipment out of the cafeteria. Of course, they returned it after the weekend and all that other stuff, it's no harm, no foul, but, you know, it's, they took a large baking sheet. So, again, I'm coming back saying, we're targeting a particular group where if it's a policy you want to say we can't do this, and I think it's applicable to everybody, us, everyone, it's, you know, don't mi- micro-target.
I just can't speak for CAPE.
That's my objection.
Reasoning behind doing this, yeah.
Uh, the board can certainly make up its own, uh, for others as well, but this one has to be passed because this is a, this is a state mandate. This is required of the Board of Education, who are required to pass this exact policy for this group. I don't know why, uh, maybe they have some issues with other, uh, in other towns, I don't know. Who knows why these things are brought up?
Typically, these things are, you know, born from issues that occur throughout the state, and they're trying to address a larger, more global problem, I, I hear your concern clearly. Yeah. We are bound sometimes by legislative.
That logic, that logic goes against me to, alright, one size fits all, no, alright? You know, it's, it, this is, this is micro-target, to me, this is discrimination. You're saying, oh, I'm a food service person, boom, I have to follow these rules. Oh, now I got to write another set of rules. And if we're saying this is a state mandate, what happens to us if we don't comply?
I think the appropriate people, uh, probably last night, would, would be the people to speak with.
The four state representatives?
Yeah. I think that, that's your best, we are, US Board are required to, uh, to pass this.
Well, if we're required, why are we voting on it?
Because the board has to, you have to pass your own, your own policy.
That's not freedom of choice, Dr. Collins.
I, I don't disagree with you.
I'm not arguing with you, I, I'm, I'm being verbose, and I apologize.
Okay, I'm gonna, well, let's, okay, let's wrap this one up. So I think we've had our discussion, all those in favor? Aye, any opposed? Okay, motion passes seven to one. Number three. Cindy?
Move the Board of Education approved policy thirty-five forty-two point thirty-three, food sales other than national school lunch program as recommended.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Sylvia, discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Number four, Mr. Sylvia?
Uh, thank you. Move the Board of Education approved policy five-one-one-eight-point-one, homeless students as recommended.
Okay, can I have a second? Seconded by Mrs. Guyan, um, discussion? Any discussion? Okay. Uh, all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Motion, uh, any opposed? No. Motion passes unanimously. Number five.
Move the Board of Education approved policy fifty-one thirty-one point six, alcohol use, drugs, and tobacco as recommended.
Can I have a second? Seconded by Mr. Tofa, and any discussion? Okay, seeing none, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Nope, motion passes unanimously. Number six, Bob. Oh, you don't, oh, you haven't, okay.
Move the Board of Education approved policy fifty-one forty-five point fourteen, on campus recruitment as recommended.
Okay, can I have a second? Seconded by Mrs. Ancona, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Number seven, Mr. Facella.
Move the Board of Education approved policy fifty-one forty-five point one-five, directory information as recommended.
Okay, can I have a second? Mrs. Ancona, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Jane, number eight.
Move the Board of Education approved policy sixty-one forty-two point ten, wellness education as recommended.
Can I have a second? Mrs. Stam? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Number nine, Josh?
Move the Board of Education approved policy six-one four-two point one-zero-one, student nutrition and physical activity as recommended.
Can I have a second? Seconded by Mr. Facella. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Nope, motion passes unanimously. Number ten. Jane.
Sorry, move the Board of Education approved policy sixty-one forty-six, graduation requirements as recommended.
Thank you, can I have a second? Seconded by Mrs. Guin. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Aye, any opposed? Okay, motion passes unanimously. Okay, number eleven.
Uh, move the Board of Education approved policy nine thousand, role of board and members as recommended.
Okay, can I have a second? Seconded by Mrs. Ancona, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Okay, number twelve.
Move the Board of Education approved policy nine zero one zero, limits of authority as recommended.
Okay, can I have a second? Uh, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Number thirteen.
Move the Board of Education approved policy ninety twelve, legal responsibilities of the Board of Education as recommended.
Okay, can I have a second? Seconded by Mrs. Stam. Any discussion? Mr. Sylvia, no? Okay, sorry, um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I'm sorry, you, you.
I do have a question. My packet, I see, um, item, uh, nine two 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 new, is that later on?
Is that the new one from the end?
I'm out of order.
Nine two 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 is number twenty-four.
Thank you.
Okay. Good, are you good?
I'm good.
Okay, um, I think that was our discussion, all those in favor?
We voted on.
We already voted, sorry, we're on, okay, we're moving on, fourteen.
Move the Board of Education approved policy ninety twenty, public statement as recommended.
Okay, can I have a second? Seconded by Mr. Tofel, um, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously, number fifteen.
Move the Board of Education approved policy ninety twenty point one, public statements advocacy as recommended.
Okay, can I have a second? Seconded by Mrs. Guin, and any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Seeing none, motion passes unanimously, number sixteen. Mr. Schulman.
Sleeping at the wheel. Move the Board of Education approved policy ninety thirty, commitment to democratic principles in relation to community staff students as recommended.
Thank you, can I have a second? Seconded by Mr. Vasella, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? No, motion passes unanimously, number seventeen.
Move the Board of Education approved policy ninety forty, board related responsibilities as recommended.
Okay, can I have a second?
Second.
Okay, seconded by Mrs. Ancona, um, discussion? Any discussion on this one? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor? Aye, any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Number eighteen.
Is it my turn? Oh. Um, move the Board of Education approved policy ninety-one twenty-one, Board of Education officers as recommended.
Okay, thank you, can I have a second? Seconded by Mrs. Ancona, uh, discussion? Mr. Schulman.
I, I, I apologize, I was, I think I was sick at our last board meeting when we discussed these, and I couldn't open my board packet for this meeting, and didn't realize that till I was here, which is my fault. But I, I remember on the seventh, we had talked about a right of the chairperson that I wanted to make sure was in there, and I can't quite remember what it was and if it was added. I think it was to appoint. No, it was to, I think it was to appoint committees? Is that in there now?
It is, number three says appoint board committee is subject to board approval, is that it, or no? Is that what you were looking for?
I think so, does any? Is, is that the discussion that we had, was it just about appointing board committees, or was it about creating? Creating new committees, wasn't it? Right, and this is subject to board approval, and I, I'm just not sure, Mr. Frees, do you? Do you recall that?
So I do recall that, and, um, what I don't have is the previous version, but I thought I recalled during that conversation that this one, uh, previously read how there were only three, an executive, a, right, so, so what we did is we struck.
And so it was also to say appoint board committees generally?
Right, we struck that out, so that way there could be others as, you know, we evolve and things change if the, uh, board chair would like to, so I think this was, uh, kinda that recommended, more broad. Um, but I, you know, I don't have that.
That's exactly what it was, uh, the board chair has the, is, has the right to, uh, create and dissolve committees at will. So they, it doesn't have to be just.
Right, and I just wanted to make sure we didn't restrict that through this.
No, this, uh, would actually take the restrictions off, the only thing you're required to have by law is a curriculum, curriculum committee. The rest can be, uh, chosen at the board's chair's discretion.
Okay. Josh, any further questions?
I mean, I don't love the subject to board approval, but I, I mean, that's, that's.
Which one says subject to board approval?
Appoint board committee subject to board approval, I mean, that just makes it seem like the chair doesn't have the right until the board approves it.
Uh, the board chair does have the right to do that without board approval, uh, it says in here?
Yeah, number three, subject to board approval.
Uh, that should not say that, um, it's the board chair's, uh, purview to do that.
Right, and so that's, yeah, so.
I would recommend.
It's definitely expanded from what it, what it was when we met on the seventh in committee. I, I do think it should not say subject to board approval, I don't know if the rest of the board agrees with that, but in, in my experience, it's, it's much easier if the need ever arises for a chair to appoint a committee, especially if it's over the summer, over winter break, instead of waiting six, eight, twelve weeks for the board to actually convene a meeting, or calling everyone in to convene a meeting.
And you know, we, I know we have in the past, you're right, we have, so.
So, which has worked, so I, I, that's my opinion that it shouldn't be subject to board approval.
I would agree with you.
That, that's something that the chair should just be able to do.
Okay, so then we should.
Just strike that out, we'll make that change.
I, I would say to make that change.
Uh, that was, uh, that was. Make a motion for the change to language?
I think we probably just have to vote it down and then bring it out the next.
That's what I was gonna say, don't we have to vote this down and then just, okay, so vote, let's.
We will change it and then we'll go through the process again.
Okay, so that was our discussion, so. Anybody in favor? No, all those opposed? Aye.
Nay?
Okay.
Do we say nay?
How do, how do we say that, motion fails, nine, uh, I'm sorry, eight to zero? Okay, never had that happen, but okay. That was a good one, good call.
It was a good thing you didn't do the consent.
Yeah, okay. All right, we're on number eighteen, Emily, go ahead.
We're on number nineteen.
We're on number.
Move the Board of Education approved policy nine one two five, attorney as recommended.
Seconded by Mr. Vasella, any discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Number twenty.
Move the Board of Education approved policy ninety-one thirty, committees as re- recommended.
Okay, can I have a second? Seconded by Mrs. Guin, um, discussion? Go ahead, Mr. Tofel.
Would this refer to the one we just motion failed?
Oh.
I guess.
It, it does show in the third sentence, I believe. I'm sorry, fourth, the chairperson of the board and the superintendent of schools, uh, I'm sorry. Right, in the second, right.
We're talking ninety-one thirty.
Correct. The chair of the Board of Education at, at any time, uh, may discontinue any of its committees or specific duties assigned to the committee for such time as may be determined.
So that seems correct.
Right, but con- would, would potentially conflict with the other one.
Right.
This is discontinue instead of create, it's also under standing committees rather than just general chairs, so I think we're still good on the other one, I think this is fine.
There were a lot of the stuff we were doing with these policies you already had, but it was in different places.
Right.
And duplicated and.
So these are kind of tandem.
Yeah.
Yep, okay, so this one.
They work together, but in this one it's fine as is, in my opinion.
So this one will work as is?
Yeah, this will work as is, okay. All right, thank you for that discussion, all those in favor? Aye, any opposed? No, motion passes unanimously, and we're on number twenty-one. Where were we?
Move the Board of Education approved policy ninety-one fifty, board consultants as recommended.
Okay, can I have a second? Seconded by Mrs. Ancona, um, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. And number twenty-two.
Move the Board of Education approved policy ninety-two ten, qualifications of members as recommended.
Okay, thank you, can I have a second? Seconded by Mr. Tofel, um, discussion? Mr. Sylvia.
Um, is there a reason why we're saying eighteen years of age?
Voting age. It's the state law, so it's, um, it just really, you really didn't have a policy to define it, and although you don't technically need it, uh, because it is a law. Uh, the board should have a policy, that's what CAPE recommends, that you have it in there, it's the obvious.
Right, that's basically where I'm coming from, because, I mean, the first sentence says right here, the Board of Education must be a resident elector, right, and the definition of elector is per state law? So, um, right. It's a re, yeah, well, it's, it's adding a criteria that may change in the future, who knows, we might change it, s- s- the state might go to sixteen years old, so I don't know, but, you know, I, I'm just.
Mr. Schulman?
I, I actually thought that our charter had age provisions in it, our town charter.
So, so even that has.
From the last time, but, but I, I think the town charter says eighteen.
I believe it, you have to be a voting age.
I, I don't know, I, I just know it's in, it's somewhere in the town charter talks about.
Well, well, right, so we, we've got a charter that says who can, who can be an elector, we have the state that says who can be the elector, and now we're coming in saying, oh, but you gotta be eighteen, so.
I, I think our charter says eighteen.
Okay.
I think, I, I, but one of us is probably right.
Are you asking why we have to say it if the charter says it?
If it's already been stated, and it's, and the definition of an elector is already put there, and we're saying we must be a resident elector. So therefore, the definition is already created, why are we coming back in and saying, oh, you gotta be eighteen also? I, it's just, and to me, it's just, it, it's a redundant.
Redundant.
But you are a separate, uh, um, agency, uh, under the state, so you really need to have your own policies, there is a town charter, um, which, uh, would apply in, except in the case where you have a policy that differs. Uh, this is what they recommend, I don't know why it's state law, but they recommend you have one, um, and I don't believe we did.
Okay, um.
It's not a big deal, but it's just a question.
Okay. I would say noted, and we will move on to a vote, all those in favor? Aye, opposed? Oh, okay, motion passes unanimously. Number twenty-three. Where were we, sorry?
It's, it's definitely me again.
Okay.
Uh, move the Board of Education approved policy nine two one four, election of members as recommended.
Thank you, can I have a second? Seconded by Mrs. Guin, uh, up for discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously, and we're on number twenty-four.
Move the Board of Education approved policy nine two two two, resignations, um, removal from office, censure as recommended.
Okay, can I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Vasella, discussion? Mr. Schulman.
This is not one I remember talking about, I'm glad Mrs. Havens brought it up in her public comment, but what authority does the board have to remove its officer? Cause I, I can't remember ever reading anything that we do have that authority.
It wasn't, that, that, I don't think was the, let me, um, what was the number on that?
Nine two two two.
Speaks to board officers.
Oh, specific to board officers?
Specific to board.
Officers, not board members.
Not from the board itself, right, now, okay, it's coming back.
And it deals with if I moved out of town and I did not resign, but I kept my post, I kept my, my office.
They would have the right to.
Legally, I can't do that, but if I didn't do it on my own accord, the board could then vote to remove me from that, to make it official.
Because, yes, yes.
You're a duly elected individual. I don't live in town anymore, and requirement is to be, is to be a electorate of the town of Newington.
Any further discussion?
Yes, yes, I'm sorry, I'm trying to formulate my thoughts.
Okay.
So two-thirds vote, I, um, I'm actually looking at this, uh, bylaw that's new, is, I, I'm calling, for lack of a better word, I'm gonna call it the Sylvia Amendment.
You're not, you're not an officer.
I'm not an officer. So, alrighty, okay, so.
We have three officers, so if, if, uh, Paul had a really bad day taking notes.
Oh, the secretary, vice president?
The president, and the chairperson, so if Paul had a really bad day taking notes, by two-thirds vote, we could vote him out of office as secretary. He still remains a board member, cause, which is not in here, because we don't have any authority anywhere to ever remove an actual elected board member, that's not in here. And now that, that was pointed out, I, I remember that conversation.
He's like, it's not me, it's an officer, I'm all set.
That's, all right, thank you very much for the clarity on the definitions.
But if you become an officer, Mr. Sylvia.
If I should be so lucky.
This policy is in place, so, just to clarify, you know?
Yeah, it's the two-thirds vote that's, that bothers me, cause I've had a habit of upsetting at least more than that.
I guess there's two ways to go about it, either make more people happy, or don't become an officer, right?
So noted, um.
Any further discussion?
The censor and reprimand, um, do we need to have due process in this? In order to censor an individual, or just because I upset the other individuals, um, and I'm censored on a particular topic? Or is it, I'm a censored for a period of time, I'm saying aye, right? But, uh, I apologize, I'm taking, I, I'm a little worried about this one, only because, um, I'm trying to understand the potential ramifications that I may be incurring, uh, in the future.
There's difference between censuring and censoring, there's no censoring allowed, so you can't be censored. Uh, you can say whatever you like, you're entitled to do that, c- censure, uh, it would be, uh, something that the board could take up, you could still say whatever you like. Doesn't make any difference.
So this should be walking away with a scarlet letter on my chest?
That's right.
Basically. That's what the, yes, Mr. Schulman.
I, I would say that as a, as a practical matter, in the event that there was ever some kind of board misconduct, the only thing that I can think of that the board could do is the chairperson could strip committee assignments. Since that's the only, that's the only possible punishment that could ever be doled out, because you can't restrict your access at meetings, or to documents, or actually affect your role as an actual board member. So, yeah, it's similar to, um, like what the, what the US Senate can do when they censure a member of the Senate, they can strip them of, um, roles and committees and, um, like leadership positions, things like that, but that's, that's about it.
Board members are elected by, by the people and cannot be removed. Um, this essentially speaks to when a board wants to take a, a position on something. Um, it allows them to state their opinion and then vote on it, uh, based on that, but essentially that's it. Nobody can stop any board member from saying whatever they like. But it does deal with, uh, board behavior if there is something else, but, uh, then you're moving into, you know, there are town ethics and, you know, the whole different category. Though people are entitled, uh, to free speech and can say whatever one chooses.
Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, we'll move to a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? No, okay, motion passes unanimously, we're on number twenty-five. Who was reading, I'm sorry, okay, so it's Steve's turn, okay?
Uh, move the Board of Education approved policy ninety-two thirty, orientation of board members as recommended.
Okay, can I have a second? Seconded by Mrs. Guin, and discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye, any opposed? Motion passes, um, but just so you know, Mrs. Braverman's here, so it passes. Is it nine? Is it nine, nine, okay, you've got it. All right, number twenty-six.
Move the Board of Education approved policy nine-two-four-zero, board member development as recommended.
Thank you, can I have a second? Seconded by Mrs. Braverman, and discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously, number twenty-seven.
Move the Board of Education rem- approved policy ninety-two fifty, reminization, or reimbursement as recommended.
Okay, thank you, can I have a second? Seconded by Mrs. Yancona, uh, discussion? Uh, Mr. Shulman?
I just wanna make sure everyone's aware that this is the part where you can set your own salary, so. You're, you're voting to not take one, so if, if you want a salary, vote no.
Um, I'm more worried about the chocolate chip cookies and the, um, other types of, uh, items of gratuity that we've been receiving, um.
Talking about board appreciation.
And the, yeah, so, the, and the, under the definition of compensation, I'm trying to put it out on the table, I don't think any of us are expecting a salary. But will anything else be construed as compensation, is my question? You know, we, we got those nice gifts last year for Appreciation Day, and, you know, I just wanna make sure what the definition of compensation is, that's.
You know, this just speaks to if you go out to, uh, uh, an out-of-state conference, uh, you can be reimbursed for travel, that's it.
That's what, so, so I'm off, I'm often asked to be a guest speaker and, and, or a presenter, like, at different forums, n- nothing to do with education, believe me, but, um, but it could be, I have been invited to educational conferences as, on behalf of what I do for my personal career.
This is just related to the board? Within your role as a board member, so we're, we're good.
My role, board, no.
Good then we're.
I mean, I can look at you in the eye and say no, but I just.
We're good.
All right.
You're good. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passes unanimously, and we're on number twenty-eight.
Okay, uh, Central was down by two when I left, and more than a hundred people were there from, from Newington, so.
Awesome.
That was good. Okay, uh, move the Board of Education approved policy ninety-two sixty, board member protection is recommended.
Thank you, can I have a second? Seconded by Mr. Tofelt, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passes unanimously, number twenty-nine.
Move the Board of Education approved policy ninety-two seventy, conflict of interest as recommended.
Okay, can I have a second? Seconded by Mrs. Yancona, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously, and we're on number thirty.
Move the Board of Education approved policy ninety-two seventy-one, code of ethics as recommended.
Thank you, can I have a second? Seconded by Mrs. Guyan, um, any discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously, we're on number thirty-one.
Move the Board of Education approved policy nine-two-seven-two, code of conduct on data use as recommended.
Thank you, can I have a second? Seconded by Mrs. Braverman, any discussion? Mr. Sylvia?
Uh, should all doc- on item number six, respect the confidentiality of privileged information. Should the information then that are, is conveyed, um, do we need to identify that this is privileged in, information, or have any sort of, um?
It already is. Anything we ever get that's privileged is, is marked privileged at the top, and I thi- I, we're usually asked, like in a
Confidential.
explosion hearing later, it, it'll say marked confidential.
Right.
Right.
And they'll ask us to leave it there.
Okay.
Yes, we'd have to leave papers.
So it'll be, it'll be marked as such?
Marked as such, and then we, um, usually whoever's there from administration makes sure that they, they, we turn it all in.
There are other things, uh, so if you get, um, certain things that are, may not be marked confidential, but it is discussed, especially in the executive session, uh, that would be privileged information. Also, for instance, uh, uh, security codes, or security maps, or things like that to the school district would be privileged information. Those types of things, they may not be marked it, but it would be assumed.
So, would given the technology that we have today and, and the manner in which we communicate, are we going to be targeting this board for more freedom of information requests as a result of this? Uh, since there might be data that we're, I'm not saying privileged, but, uh, have been made accessible to us via our drop boxes and things of that nature that are not readily available to the general public? And, I mean, it, I can see in the future, individuals wanting to really have the same information we're viewing on a daily basis.
Mr. Shulman?
And, anything that, that would be considered privileged by the board, that's, that's an exception to the FOIA laws. So if Dr. Collins sent us something via email, which I don't think he ever would with a student's name or person identifiable information in it, that would be a privileged communication, if someone sent a FOIA to you for your emails from that day, that email would be held back by the attorneys under the exception for student person identifiable information, the same thing goes with kinda contracts and, um, security stuff, and there's a whole list of exceptions to FOIA that attorneys, i- if you ever got a FOIA for your emails for the board, um, all your emails be turned over to an attorney to review, all privileged information would be held back from that FOIA, um, submission.
Any further discussion? Okay, thank you, all those in favor? Aye, any opposed? One. Motion passes eight to one. Okay, I think we're on number thirty-two, thank you.
Sorry. Move the Board of Education approved policy ninety-three twelve, bylaws as recommended.
Thank you, can I have a second? Seconded by Mr. Vassella, um, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passes unanimously, number thirty-three.
Move the Board of Education approved policy ninety-three thirteen, formulation, adoption, amendment of administrative regulations as recommended.
Thank you, can I have a second? Seconded by Mrs. Yancona, um, discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passes unanimously, number thirty-four.
Move the Board of Education, excuse me, move the Board of Education approved policy nine-three-two-two, public and executive sessions as recommended.
Thank you, can I have a second? Seconded by Mr. Tofelt, any discussion? Mr. Sylvia?
Are, are these in line with, um, our town, uh, charter? Uh, I mean, are we, is this something different than what we have been doing historically, or are we just documenting the fact that we're, uh, holding, uh, public participation in a different manner? Uh, th- this confused me of why we're trying to define public participation purpose and scope at the board meetings, I, I thought that was already defined, and it's under our Robert's rules, and things of that nature, so.
That's, this is current.
Or is this just one of the ones we're just renumbering?
That, that portion of its current, the highlighted portions is what's being added in.
Right.
So the public participation's not been changed, meaning it currently is under board bylaws?
Yeah, bottom part, the stuff that's highlighted, there are changes.
So five members of this board went to a Boston's Red Sox game, we're having a meeting?
Right. We discussed this. We had the, we had that discussion already, Dr. Collins clarified that if we gather, we are not to talk about board policy or board, board things. However, we can get together and have a good time and do something, but we can't talk about board decision makings or businesses, exactly.
Mr. Shulman?
The general rule of thumb from board council has been, and, and, and law school classes with our board council, who was my professor, is that you should probably try to avoid those situations as much as possible, you shouldn't have like, a, a weekly dinner of six board members going out together in public, cause it can give the presumption to the public that you're discussing board matters at that dinner. But of course, you know, if I have an extravaganza party, and it happens that five people come to my house for it, that's much less likely to look that way to the public when there are other members in the public there, and, and it's a, you know, no one's talking about issues, but anytime that a majority of the boards together, that's not of the same political party, uh, and discusses board issues, it creates a meeting in contravention to freedom of information and open meeting laws.
So it's, it's an optics issue, thank you, Josh, but, so let's just say we're at the, the Red Sox game. Um, and I go to Dr. Braverman, pull her aside, I'm gonna go bribe her and buy her some drinks and hot dogs, uh, to convey, would that be construed as, um, improper under this, or me trying, I pulled her aside, I'm not with the other five, but I'm at the game, but I pulled her aside and I'm buying, I'm bribing her, cause I'm, you know, buying her a cup of coffee or whatever she wants, so, um, I'm, I'm trying to get the, the, the context of this, is that, is it just a perception thing we're trying to avoid here, or?
If you're talking about bribing someone, I think that's wrong.
Well, okay, yeah, but that was my intent, though, so I, I'm honest, I'm saying, you know, okay, I think.
Are you asking because you, you're one off with one board member?
I'm one off, I don't know, I'm, I'm.
And you're, you're asking, like, you're actually discussing board business?
By buying her hot dogs and, and cokes and things, so, yeah, I'm using the word bribe. Yeah.
Totally different policy.
So, uh, probably a wrong use of words, I apologize, Dr. Braverman. But that was sort of my, I, I'm trying to understand the context of like, you know, I, I've been, I have been to a few meetings, you know, that, uh, caucus meetings, uh, we don't, we, you know, we sort of, we don't talk board m- issues, but, you know, we're sort of like getting the flavor of what the town's wanting, so I'm, I'm trying to understand, is that illegal by this type of, uh, definition?
Mr. Shulman?
So there's, there's two parts to that
Okay.
question, so the first would be if the five Republican board members met together in caucus, that is not a meeting subject to the Freedom of Information Act. That's a caucus, that's allowed. If all five of you were at the Republican, uh, town committee meeting, and we're discussing how the board is going to vote on something, or how you think the board should vote on something, that potentially could be a meeting in violation of the open meeting laws. If you're just giving information and taking back in from, like, this is what the board's been doing, this is what the board's considering, and then getting feedback from other people at the meeting saying, uh, this is what we think you should do, you should consider this, that, and the other thing, that would not constitute a meeting, cause you haven't actually discussed board action. Um, the, the difference between discussing board, um, things that have happened and actually taking board actions is different, so the optics is a completely different, separate matter, so the optics of, of six, or seven, or eight board members being together in one place and talking without letting anyone else hear what they're talking about, the optics are bad, you may not be violating anything, but you may get a complaint, and people may stop trusting you that you're actually doing your business in public. You know, five people, you know, five of us can go after this meeting and go grab a soda and some popcorn, and not in, you know, and discuss the, uh, NBA season so far, and we wouldn't be violating any laws, but other people at the same place may say, we think they had an open meeting, they, and there may be a huge investigation to it, you may defeat public trust in the institution, so i- it's kind of a, a fine line there, but I mean, the, the generics are five board members, not of the same political party, can't be in the same place discussing board actions. Um, that also does potentially extend to emails when one board member emails another board member who emails another one, creates a chain of five people discussing board action. That, I kind of, I, I kind of zoned out when Attorney Mooney was talking to me about that in law school, but I believe that's an iffy gray area, that it's not completely clear, but it could be, and you probably want to avoid discussing any kind of board action in that manner.
That's what Tom usually says, it depends.
Exactly.
Thank, thank you, Josh, for the, uh, education, I needed it. All right, I have no more.
Okay, thank you. Uh, seeing no further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passes unanimously, and we are on number thirty-five. Who are we, Mr. Tof- Tofelt?
Sorry about that. Move the Board of Education approved policy thirty, ninety-three twenty-three, agenda construction and meeting materials as recommended.
Thank you, can I have a second? Seconded by Mrs. Guyan, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passes unanimously, number thirty-six. Thank you, Dr. Braverman, um, can I have a second? Seconded by Mrs. Stam, um, discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously, number thirty-seven.
Move the Board of Education approved policy nine-three-two-five point one, quorum as recommended.
Thank you, can I have a second? Seconded by Mr. Tofelt, any discussion? Okay, seeing none, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously, number thirty-eight.
Move the Board of Education approved policy ninety-three twenty-five point two, order of business as recommended.
Thank you, can I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Vassella, any discussion? Mr. Sylvia?
Uh, do we need to add to this one, um, executive session or anything, um, as a subtitle or a subitem? My apologies, thank you.
Necessary, okay, got it, thank you.
Your identical policy, you had this a number change, same thing.
Okay, okay, thank you, um, that was our discussion, okay, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passes unanimously, number thirty-nine.
Move the Board of Education approved policy nine-three-two-five point four, vote recording as recommended.
Thank you, can I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Vassella, any discussion? Mr. Sylvia?
So, um, the minutes, I know that we've been having minutes at a high level, such and such action taken, voted passed, right? But, um, are we only utilizing the video recordings of the actual meetings to, to get to the actual conversations that have occurred, or, um, or do we need to have any more gran- I guess I'm asking, do we need more granularity in the minutes? Um, as a point of written record?
The, uh, every person you speak to at CAPE or, um, recommend that, uh, the time that's spent, uh, with this body that you have together be spent talking about kids and programs and not correcting minutes, and so that the recommendation is, since it is, uh, videotaped or whatever they call it, um, that you spend your time just recording the votes, uh, that's how it's been done for years, um, for most boards of education, I know they do it differently on the town side, uh, here again, you are, um, your own elected body, um, and the recommendation from CAPE and all good practice would be to record it the way you've been doing all along.
So, so there's no legal requirement for us having written record beyond just what our actions were taken?
That's right.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Okay, let's go to a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Okay, and flip your page, I think, oh.
One more.
Oh.
One forty, we got a forty left.
Oh, sorry.
Move the Board of Education approved policy ninety-three twenty-six, minutes as recommended.
Okay, can I have a second? Okay, seconded by Mrs. Yancona, um, discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Uh, any opposed? Motion passes unanimously, now we're on forty-one.
Move the Board approved policy ninety-three twenty-seven point one, electronic mail communications as recommended.
Thank you, can I have a second? Seconded by Mr. Tu- Tufel, um, any discussion?
This too, I believe, is just a number change.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any, any opposed? Motion passes unanimously, and we're on number forty-two.
Move the Board of Education approved policy nine-three-three-zero, board school district records as recommended.
Thank you, can I have a second? Seconded by Mr. Tofelt, and discussion? Mr. Sil?
Um, I believe when this one came up first, I made a, a, a. Um, I believe when this one came up first, I made a, a, maybe it was a question that we're re- storing all data on site. And I know it's customary that um, maybe it's been convenient, it's historical, but you know, it's at a point where space is a premium. Um, have does this still require us to keep it on site or do we have the freedom to just say use Iron Mountain or services or what type of format we want to keep it in?
You do. There's no requirement at all that we kept on site. Um, but uh Stephen uh and his crew have been really going through our, we call the fan room um and weeding out anything that we, that can be destroyed legally is being destroyed now. Uh, it looks tremendous in there. Um, there are the things we have to hold forever, um, that can be digitized, obviously. There's an expense to that. There are some things that, well, say they're sentimental, but I mean, I don't know the, you know, we have the logbook from the first day of school in nineteen twenty-nine leather bound, you know. Is it necessary that we keep that? No, we can digitize it. It's a, picks up a little bit of space, but uh.
Yeah, that's, you keep it.
I can't, I can't throw it out. It's a.
What are those things called? Showcase, shadow box?
Well, we have a, we have a, they're lining the fan room, so it's not just one. So, you know, at some point we may have to.
Right, but so, but see the, I'm reading, all such records shall be maintained at the office of the Superintendent of Schools.
Well, eh, yes, but uh could I drive over to uh warehouse or whatever and if I needed to get it, absolutely. You know, I think they're what they're, we're speaking to as things that you need to get to uh right away. So there are some things that I have to get, and when they say Superintendent of Schools, I mean, personnel records and they, it's central office. There are certain things that uh uh HCD has to get to every day, certain things uh that are called dry storage, whatever it is, could be located offsite. Would we have to go get them? Absolutely, but we could get them relatively quickly. So it doesn't necessarily mean they all have to be stored like right here. We could put them in a warehouse somewhere as long as I could drive there and get them, or somebody could drive there and get them.
Well, yeah, I was just worried that this was going to uh paint us into a corner that we can only do certain things with our records. Um, given the the nature of the language, this, that was my only concern.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, let's go to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passes unanimously and we are on number forty-three.
Move the Board of Education approved policy ninety-three-fifty, Board of Education hearing as recommended.
Thank you. Can I have a second? Seconded by Dr. Braverman, any discussion? Mr. Sylvia.
Is this a state law? Uh, and so is it a state law saying that the board must now have a policy that re- repeats a state law?
Well, yes, you're you're an arm of the state, so you are, you are required to implement the laws of the state.
Right, so it's a state law, so why are we having it as a policy?
Mr. Shulman?
So I can't speak to ten-dash-two-thirty-eight specifically, but almost every other state law actually says the Board of Education of each, each Board of Education in the state must adopt a policy that says X, Y, and Z. Um, because the state has created us, they then tell us what we have to do.
Right.
That's essentially, that's how the state laws work in that, in, in s- in 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 all of ours, in in ten, I don't know, what's the, what's the first part of that statute called?
Ten-dash-two-twenty?
Ten.
Right, what's the, what's the ten, what's the, it's called something, it's it's a chapter or, chapter, chapter ten. In chapter ten of of Connecticut General statutes, almost all the laws act like that, if you, if you read through them. So it 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 likely, I haven't read it recently, but it likely actually says the board must adopt or shall adopt a policy that states this. Mr. Freezy shaking his head, so I must be right.
There are times when it does conflict with the local town charter, um, and the the state law overrides town charter. So that's where we get into conflict periodically.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, we will go to uh, move to a vote. Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Mr. Sylvia. Okay, so um, I'm sorry, motion passes eight to one. Okay, got it. All right, number forty-four.
Move the Board of Education approved policy ninety-three-sixty, school board legislative program as recommended.
Thank you. Can I have a second? Seconded by Mrs. Ancona, um, discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, motion passes unanimously and we are on the last one of this section, number forty-five.
Move the Board of Education approved policy ninety-four-zero-zero, monitoring products and process, self-evaluation as recommended.
Thank you. Can I have a second? Seconded by Mrs. Guyan and discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nope, motion passes unanimously. And we are going to now move to our added agenda item, number uh forty-six, and I'll ask Mrs. Ancona to read the motion for us.
Move the Newington Board of Education authorize the following two thousand sixteen to two thousand seventeen budget transfer.
Thank you. Can I have a second? Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, sorry, sorry.
I don't blame you. Twenty-nine fifty employee benefits plus five hundred and fifteen thousand. Ten-twelve English Language Arts certified salaries minus one hundred and three thousand. Ten-twenty mathematics certified salaries minus one hundred and three thousand. Ten-twenty-six reading certified salaries minus one hundred and three thousand. Ten-twenty-eight science certified salaries minus one hundred and three thousand. Ten-thirty social studies certified salaries minus one hundred and three thousands.
Thank you. Now can I have a second? Okay, seconded by Mrs. Guyan, so the motion's been made and seconded, seconded, we will now move to discussion. I don't know if this is gonna be Lou?
Yeah, sure.
Or, okay.
Yes, uh, the purpose of this motion is to align your current operating budget really for a much more effective presentation uh of Dr. Collins' presentation next week and ultimately to the Town Council several weeks later. Uh, if everybody can recall, when we did the reconciling uh motions last April to bring our budget in balance with the Town Council appropriation, there was a five hundred and fifteen thousand hour cut we had to impose, which was offset by the uh money set up in the non-lapsing fund. You know, we had to declare a surplus. At the time, because we had no idea where this cut was specifically going to come from, uh, we chose to take the entire balance of that against the employee benefits account, not against the salary account. As we see how our, we're putting together our budget and some of the potential confusion of information that could be presented that, why do you have a positive variance here when you should have a negative variance? Uh, it just will create a element of uncertainty about the uh presentation and the clarity of the information you're going to get. By moving the shortfall back into the salary account for the five hundred and fifteen thousand dollar cut, you will get a true reflection of how everything works out and the presentation, the summarization of the budget will be accurate for um the board's purposes of evaluation starting next week. So this has nothing to do with the actual operation of a non-lapsing fund, this is just within our operating budget.
Questions from Mr. Jackemowitz? Mr. Sylvia.
All right, so I I'm recollecting our last conversation that we had that we've our s- we found a solution for the fifteen teachers of why we held this money in and carried it over so that we could make sure that we could um maintain our uh teaching staff. That's no longer an issue, correct?
Correct.
So it's, we have five hundred and fifteen thousand sitting in these account, but we're asking to have it allocated back to these salary structures?
No, this motion has nothing at all to do with the non-lapsing account. That is offline from this discussion. This is just strictly to correct the presentation of what your budget is going to be next week that Dr. Collins shows the board in getting everything aligned properly.
So the five hundred and fifteen thousand still exist in that other account?
We're not touching, there's no action on that.
We're not reallocating funds.
Not at this time.
It still sits there. We haven't determined what we want to do with it now since we've.
Well, right, well, we have. We will be drawing down on it.
Yeah, later in the year.
Right, as the year progresses, we will be drawing down on it for those people.
Sure.
Okay, so is this five fifteen, is that the hole that's left from?
Yes, we're just moving the hole from benefits to back to salaries.
Okay, so now that hole is going to be illustrated by the, these negative, these numbers coming out of each of those categories. Okay, got it.
Thank you, that was good. Now I get it.
So we've got, we still have the five fifteen in the account.
Yes.
We still have the other windfall that we got from the, the actual employee benefits reimbursement, right? That's the one point two million.
Correct.
We haven't identified what we really want to do with that yet. But we have a recommendation coming to us on how we want to draw down on this five fifteen. Since we're not using it for the teachers now.
You will be.
We are using it for teachers.
You will be. Yes, as we come to closer toward the end of the year, we will have to draw down on this. So what will be left at the end of the year is uh, I don't want to say, you know, an educated guess, um, but you will have to draw into that, into that fund. You won't hopefully have to use it all, but you will have to use it uh to fill the gaps.
All right, so the purpose that we carried over the money was for teachers?
That's right, that's where it will be.
And we're, but we, since we don't have to now cover the fif- fourteen or fifteen teachers that we carried it over for, we're going to use it for a different purpose, other than?
No, no.
No.
All right, the magnitude will not be as great, you know.
Right.
Realize other savings, which has mitigated the need to go get all five hundred and fifteen thousand right now.
So it won't be all five fifteen, uh, so in other words, and I'll be explaining that in my budget presentation next, next week. So as things occurred over the summer from last April seventh, I believe it was.
Sixteenth.
April sixth, uh, from that time, any breakage that we accumulated uh would be deducted. So you wouldn't necessarily need the entire five fifteen, but you, you, there's some of it, it's gonna be needed. Maybe half or so, whatever it happens to be.
So this motion is to adjust um the May twenty-fifth discussion we had that showed that we were gonna take the money out of the employee benefits fund and you're just saying, no, I'm gonna take a hundred and three from this, a hundred and three from this, a hundred and three.
Right.
Um. Okay, thank you very much.
It's confusing. Okay, I'll take your word for it, till next week. Um, any other further discussion around this motion? Okay, I think we're good. Um, all those in favor? Aye, any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Okay, we moved out of new business. We are now to item G on our agenda, which would be the Superintendent of Schools report, so Dr. Collins will be presenting.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Petronio. The uh, a couple of things, uh, if you look at our enrollment, I always start with that uh because we will be starting with that in my presentation next uh week as well. You see that our projected enrollment is very different than our uh, our current enrollment. We uh, we're projected to have forty-two thirteen, we have forty-two seventy-four. There's good news and bad news in that, and if you look at the the two numbers above totals, the out of, out of district, which seems like a small number, as I've shared with you, is the most important number because it is the most expensive number. So going from forty-six to fifty-four is uh big. Conversely, uh, we were projected to have, uh, I I know it was more than one ninety-four, didn't we, we started with that? Uh, we're down to one hundred and sixty-four students outplaced in magnet schools. However, you're still gonna pay for the one seventy, uh, one seventy-two who are enrolled in October first. Uh, they're projecting one ninety-one for next year and I I believe that is an accurate assessment where I I bucked it and took a chance for this year. I I think they're right next year. Uh, so that's, so that's important. A lot of really good things still going on in the district. I'm sure you, you've had a chance to read this. Our data team uh becomes more or, I want to say, less administrative uh dependent and they are operating uh, I don't say on their own completely, but but they are, they are really making some some decisions for the district that I, that I think are are fantastic, is really nice to see. Um, as far as we, there's been a lot of um discussion over uh Anna Reynolds and and a lot of controversy as far as that goes, and um I do want to clear a couple of things up um with regard to some of the work that can be done over there, and this would be really a discussion for the board. Um, we're trying to get an estimate on what it would cost to, to uh, I want to say, take care of some of the cosmetic um items uh that have obviously been uh uh very noticeable for people, and we can certainly do that. Uh, it's not quite as simple as it 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 looks. Uh, I'm, we're estimating, I would say, about a twenty thousand dollar expenditure to uh, to um, to do that, which isn't, isn't a lot of money, but but um, it it's, it's, you know, they have a bathroom at one of the schools, or so, so, so it really, it's gonna be up to however the board wants to do that, we're happy to do that. Um, at this point, I would recommend that that it does, that you do that, that.
Is that something that would come out of the public school CIP account that we have?
This would come out of your maintenance budget.
And there's no way we could turn that into?
I could, the only way I could do it is, well, sure, if I renovate the whole bathroom. But we don't, we don't, I want to try to stay away from that. I um, I think we can spruce it up. But it doesn't meet the criteria for, for that, that account.
Do you think it's worthwhile to have a conversation with um Ann about that?
I I don't want to put Ann in a, in a, in a, I don't know, I think that'd be kind of wink, wink, I don't, we don't, we don't, you know, if it doesn't meet the criteria, it doesn't meet the criteria, so we'd rather stay away from that. So we're talking really um paint, which, as I think I've shared with people, it's glazed tile, it's not, uh, it won't adhere. We, we have to, have to have it stripped and sandblasted, whatever it is, whatever they do, I don't know. Um, and then paint over it, which I think, to be honest with you, for parents and for whatever, I don't know why parents would, would say I was blaming them, I certainly would never blame parents for, uh, for that, but uh, I don't want them to feel as if they're sending their kids to school in a in a rundown school because it, it, it needs work, but it isn't, um, it isn't terrible, it, it probably looks worse in pictures than it does. That being said, it does need some work. So we're gonna try to spruce up the bathrooms, be looking at, I would say, an estimated twenty thousand dollar expenditure that would need to come out of your, your maintenance budget. So that's, that's that, I wanted to kind of clear that up. We'll get it done as soon as possible. We're getting estimates now and uh.
What would be, okay, so if we were to do that, what, what was that money supposed to be being used for?
It will come out of another school, so it will, so something won't get done, something that's on the list at another school won't get done. But at this point, honestly, it, that's what I was trying to avoid. We were trying to put as many resources as we possibly could into John Patterson um because that too was on the list to be renovated. But I don't see going anywhere with two schools. So what I'd rather do is try to address as many of the issues as we can uh through our operating budget and the public school CIP fund uh at John Patterson and um and wait, wait for the renovation uh at Anna Reynolds to do the whole thing. Uh, I don't, I don't see any point in taking the roof off. It's not ceiling tiles that we're talking about, uh, you're actually looking at the roof deck. Um, I, we'd have to take the whole roof deck off and replace the roof, and it's not leaking. So I, I think that would be a waste of money, in my opinion.
I'm sorry, a waste of money to repair the roof?
The roof, well, it's not leaking.
The roof's not leaking?
No.
So?
It looks bad. Um, it's not falling on anybody, it's not uh, but it's not leaking. Somebody hits it with a basketball, remember it's a plenum or a, a techdom deck. So somebody hits it with a basketball, some of the stuff comes out, they're not ceiling tiles. If it were just ceiling tiles, we would replace the ceiling tiles, but it's not, there's no grid or ceiling tiles up there. You're actually looking at the roof deck.
So it, so in the um, the, the team's perspective, it's just an assist- So, so in the, um, the, the team's perspective, it's just an aesthetics issue?
Yeah, right. We'll, we'll do whatever we can to clean it up, obviously. Uh, but I can't see tearing the roof off and putting a new roof on there.
Well, if there's no leakage, okay, I, I can respect that.
I was hoping not to tear the bathrooms out, put a new bathroom in, you know, um, but it's not as simple as going in there with a roller and, and, uh, rolling the paint on either.
So we're anticipating it's a twenty thousand dollar expenditure to try to address the i- identified issues?
Cos- cosmetic, so.
It's cosmetic, right, but it, 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 right, and right now, it, it, I don't know about the rest of us, but I know that I've gotten a fair share of phone calls and such to try to, you know, make sure that, uh, Anna Reynolds gets the respect it deserves, and it's all optics, I'm sure, but thank you, I appreciate.
But it's funny, I think it's worth it, I mean, you know, I, you know.
And I missed the previous question, uh, is there a anticipated timeframe, or?
Well, yeah, SEP, uh, so we're getting, we're getting some quotes now, uh, about, about that. Um, I, I do wanna speak a little bit to the window, because I think there was some misunderstanding about the, the, the window and, you know, it's, it, the point there was the, um, uh, there's a double pane, uh, Plexiglas there. And, uh, can we paint the, uh, metal over the rust, absolutely, we can't touch it because of the PCB.
Right, right.
So we can't, I can't replace the window. I can, I can spruce up the bathroom, we can make it look nicer, um, and we can go as far as we want. The minute I start pulling the sinks off the wall and, and everything else, uh, you know, and, and, and actually, the faucets don't look bad. There was, somebody took a picture of one of the faucets, it was really old, but most of them don't look, don't look that bad. Uh, but we'll spruce it up, and, uh, the hallways still look great, I mean, you walk in to the building. Uh, like I said, my, my biggest concern, uh, at that particular building is the, uh, and, and when I say air quality, I don't, I don't wanna alarm people, but when, when it gets warmer, it, it's very, very hot. And very, you know, there are, there are far more respiratory, um, uh, incidents now. And it's very, very warm, and putting, our plan was to take the air conditioning units that are in the windows at John Patterson as we were going around replacing that school, uh, and putting them into, um, Anna Reynolds. I can do that, we can put the units in the windows, my fear is that the moment we turn them on, that we're going, we don't have enough electrical service there. And he has difficulty, he and the custodial crew, who are phenomenal, by the way, um, they, they can blow off fuse, uh, just the minute they plug the floor machine in. So I mean, we are at the limit of our, uh, capabilities with regard to the infrastructure. So that's just another thing that you dig into. You know, so I can put them in the windows, we turn them on, and lights go out. So I mean, that's where we're at, so I mean, it's, it's a, you know, where do you stop? How much money do you spend, um, upgrading the electrical, putting a new roof on? I mean, those are the kinds of decisions that really, um, you're faced with.
Mrs. Sky.
I just wanna go back to the, just the words that you said there was the air quality, and I feel like that's something that will, will alarm people. So is it a situation where it's dangerous, where there's mold or anything like that?
And that's why, I mean, I wanna say about, about air quality, but, um, it, when you are looking at ninety degree temperature. Now, the argument can be made that for the past sixty-three years, the kids have survived. That being said, sixty-three years ago, we did not have the types of medically fragile kids in our schools. Uh, and you'll see that number, um, is, is alarming. I would say it's alarming, I think it's great that we're, we're bringing them back, they would have been outplayed somewhere before, you know. So we are, we are caring for, uh, far more medically fragile kids than we ever have. They have different, different needs, um, and when it gets into the warmer weather, it does present a problem. One of the reasons that I posted those pictures was because it was brought to my attention by the teachers at Anna Reynolds. And, um, so, you know, while I didn't wanna pick a fight with anybody, never my intent, I, I do wanna make sure that we are addressing what the teachers are, are voicing, the concerns they're voicing. Uh, and that is that, that, you know, we've been waiting a while, um, when are we gonna get this done? And one of the teachers actually took the pictures. And so I shared with, I would post them, and I wanted to make sure that, you know, she, her concern was, was raised and publicized, and, and, uh, so that's why that was done. So to the parents of Anna Reynolds, um, we're gonna come, we're gonna, we're gonna make the bathrooms look a little bit better. Hallways still look great, and you walk into the lobby, it still looks magnificent. But she's old.
I wanted to just ask, actually, I was gonna wait till a board member comment, but I think I'll just do it now. Um, I just wanted to say, I've been, um, this is my tenth year on the board, and since I've been on the board, John Patterson and Anna Reynolds, for ten years, have been on lists to be renovated. And I've watched year after year as they, you know, other projects, you know, rose above and, and they kind of lowered themselves. I even remember about five years ago, where it was finally, everybody kinda came to the realization that there was no way that we would be able to renovate both schools. And at that time, we saw more resources, we had to look at the two schools and say, which one is worse? And, and clearly, um, at that point, Anna Reynolds had, had greater needs. So thinking that that was gonna be the first one to be renovated, some resources were, were brought over to, um, to John Patterson. That being said, I, I'm being asked, just like all of you, um, you know, well, what can be done, what are the next steps, what needs to happen? And I, I think that that's, that's been put out there, and it's the, it's a building committee, so that's what needs to happen next, so that we can hire an architect and get, um, the RFP going, and get the specs of the project, and estimate a price so that we can apply for grant funding, so we can get half of that project money back. Um, so we, you know, years ago, we were looking at about a ten point five million dollar project, now we're talking about fourteen, fifteen million dollars. And we don't even know if that's correct, or we're even in the ballpark or not, because we don't have that building committee established. So when people ask what the next steps are, or what's necessary, we have to get to that point, because even by just assembling a building committee, we are still, oh, months and months away, there are deadlines. I know Lou spoke to us about a deadline, and I think it's sometime in June, where you have to apply for, for reimbursement and funding, and things such as that. So, um, again, just to put that out there, um, you know, again, people are asking, what needs to happen next, what can we do? Um, we did ask the town council, and, um, for various reasons, um, at this time, they did not approve the building committee, um, I, I'm hopeful that, that's something that can be revisited. Um, just so that we can get it on the radar and, and actually find out what it would take for us to begin the project.
Yeah, that's what we were, we were hoping to do, uh, we, we, I think it's understood that, um, in no way do, do we want to interfere with the town hall project, we know that's a town, uh, project that, that, that they really wanna get going on, and I understand why. But, uh, we want to, um, make sure that we have all our ducks in the line. And there are no surprises for the council as they, as they move that forward. So once the bonding issue, or, uh, has gone out for the town hall, and that's all kind of on its way, uh, we wanna be ready, uh, with some accurate figures, uh, for kind of round two. But we fully understand, uh, at one point, it was part of the, the original, um, bonding issue. Obviously, that was voted down, and, um, and things were split. And we were, Ms. Petronio and Mr. Sch- Schumler are on the committee, and I believe you numbered them, number two, I believe. So we, I'm, I, I've been telling people that we are next, uh, Anna Reynolds is next. And I, I just think teachers are getting, I'm gonna say tired of hearing that, because we've been hearing that for a long time. So, you know, I mean, I'm kind of in a bind, I understand completely where the town is, and I'm trying to be respectful of, uh, the town needs. But I also have to be respectful of, of the teachers and the kids and their needs in that building. And obviously, my job is to make sure that that's my priority. Which is, it is, uh, but I am also trying to be respectful and understand where the town is coming from. So it's, you're right in the middle there.
Mr. Sylvia.
Well, thank you, um. I've learned a lot about the process and such, and where we're at. Um, and now that we've passed a policy that, uh, I can't get compensation now, as a P O E member. I would like to, um, offer my skills as an architect to the board, to get the ball rolling so that we can at least collect the programmatic needs, scopes, get it documented, working with the, the chair of the, uh, Anna Reynolds, the STAM. I'm more than willing to offer my services, skills, to help to at least start to collect the data that at least when an architect and the building committee is, um, formed, be it May or June, as what the town council, I think, was implying in their last discussions. Um, I mean, we at least have a package of information saying, this is what we are envisioning we need at, um, Anna Reynolds. And it, we're a few weeks or a few, a couple of months ahead of the game.
Unfortunately, that, that is one of the areas where, um, we, we are required to follow the town charter. Um, the board, uh, you, you, you can't do that. Because you need council action, you need council permission in order to, to do that. So you are not allowed to do that, it has to be a committee, uh, and the council has three members, the board has two. And so they have to be the ones to authorize you to do that. So you, you can't, we've already done the others, uh, we've done it twice with, uh, kind of the independent architect, if you will, kind of a ballpark. But we need more than a ballpark, um.
So, eh, eh, okay, I'm, I'm struggling, it, this is almost like what I heard earlier today, this evening, you know, I can't get it, we can't get parents to go and do a little paint party, blah, 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 at Anna Reynolds because of the, uh, I, I'm, I'm getting a little bit overwhelmed here, because it's simple for us to put together a scope document to say what we need to do.
We already had that.
You have the scope document, you already identified.
We, we've, we presented it at, uh, we presented it to the council that night.
Oh.
Yeah.
Alright, thank you, I, I don't have anything else to add.
Mr. Tovell.
At the meeting, town council meeting last night, our state representative and senator stated that Ann Reynolds project, should they, they possibly get it going for the funding, and they're with the budget, upcoming budget, they were thinking of a reduction in the return money from fifty-eight percent down to fifty-four percent.
If you remember, that's what Dr. Collins told us when he first brought it to our attention, him and Lou. Lou has said this multiple times to us, that he's concerned that the longer we wait, that's why I brought up the ten million dollar figure, the fourteen million dollar figure. But more importantly, we are getting reimbursed at fifty percent, right, for school building, even more than that, like fifty-seven, fifty-eight percent. And we anticipate that to drop in the future, so now is the time to do it.
They could cut it out completely, which is what I'm afraid of.
That's what we're afraid of.
Right, the judge, uh, from CJEF said that, um, while the state is not funding appropriately its education program, it is, uh, very generous in its grants. So if I'm the governor, and I'm, I'm looking at what to do, uh, that's the first place.
First place to cut.
Right, and now you're looking at, at, instead of funding seven million or whatever it is, you're funding all of it. And that's okay for an elementary school, you still, you can still do it. And we're gonna do everything we can, we've done everything we can to keep the high school off the list, but, you know, high, high schools are a hundred million dollar projects. So, you know, fortunately, that's not in our future.
Mr. Fassala.
Um, on Monday, I attended a webinar with the, um, Cabe and the, um, Commissioner of Education. And the outlook that they had was very grim. Um, they did speak to the point that if you don't have your paperwork in for reimbursement, likely, you won't see it. They, they were, like, again, it was, wasn't a, wasn't a happy webinar, let's put it that way. But, um, they did say that in April, they felt that it was going to be revisited, and they'd have more information in April as to what was actually going on, but it, it was a very interesting hour, let me tell you.
Yeah, if you don't get it on the general assembly for this ju- uh, this June.
Chances are, it's.
Well, then, then, you're still facing a school that needs to be renovated, and so it still has to go forward. But now you have to pay for the whole thing.
Dr. Braverman.
Our state representatives last night were very concerned that there might not be money at all for, for us, for any grants, depending on the budget and what happens in Hartford, so we may have to.
Yeah, I, I, I was at both meetings, and I was at the webinar also, I have to, I have to concur, it was, it was not a, um, kumbaya moment. So, um, and, and given the timeline, I would, I would have to say that we're going, we're probably going to be, as a com- community, doing the heavy lifting, uh, given the amount of re- reimbursements that we might see, given the time we finally get the paperwork in. But I think that's not the only front, I, I think there's gonna be a, many other reimbursements that will be curtailed.
The last thing, I'm, I'm attending the legislative breakfast, uh, tomorrow. And the, the topics that we're bringing up, and I'll, I have a copy of this for each of you. We are going to talk about, um, a fair formula, we're, that's one of the things we're gonna be talking about, we're gonna be talking about the burden of, uh, uh, special education. We're gonna be talking about the, um, the mandates, because while the funding is going down, the mandates are continuing and continuing, and very often conflicting. Uh, the one I have spoken up very loudly about is, uh, is PA one eighty-nine. Um, and that is, that has been very, very problematic, very time consuming, and very expensive, the data privacy. Where it sounds great, but it's very, very expensive, and, and it's something that they didn't really think through. Um, and then the other is supporting, uh, regional and collaborative efforts with other, other school districts, other towns. Uh, we're, we're gonna try to support that and try to get some of the legislation lifted, if you will, or some of the, some of the red tape, uh, lifted so that we could, uh, realize some inefficiencies with, uh, with other communities without some of the, um, restrictions that are currently placed on us. So those are kind of the big, the four major topics that we're gonna hopefully talk about tomorrow.
But, and that was brought up by the state representatives, they were literally saying, please, help us micro-target the mandates. Uh, I know that Representative, um, Gary Bryan, Bryan.
Byron.
Yeah, Bryan, and Senator Doyle, you know, they both said, you know, and then the gentleman, I think, from the New Britain side, also came on in and says, give it, just, really, just hand us the information, we'll, we'll tackle it.
Already did, gave bullet points.
Gary did mention that he's had conversations with you, so, oh, great, if the information's in their hands, that's wonderful, so I, I appreciate it. Prioritize the bullet.
Mr. Tovell.
And the representatives also offered to come to our meeting and hear some of our.
Challenges?
Challenges to the unfunded mandates. So, uh, they're open to coming and discussing.
Thank you. Alright, that's it for the superintendent's report, uh, we're gonna move on to, um, item H on our agenda, public participation on any matter related to board responsibilities. This is our second opportunity for public participation. If you could please, again, state your name and address.
Hello again, Scott Kraskowski, forty-six Miami Avenue. A little less, less nervous talking now, now that the paper's gone, but, um, first of all, Dr. Collins, uh, my phone has been going crazy since you, uh, made your announcement there about fixing up Anna Reynolds. And many parents are very happy about it, so I'd like to say a sincere thank you. I've always been of the opinion that Anna Reynolds does need to be, uh, remodeled. And again, I called for it last night at the town council meeting, so hopefully that gets moving along. I'd like to talk about the drone thing, I know it's passed already. I really love flying my drone, it's, uh, relaxing and, uh, um, I'm afraid of heights, but, uh, flying my drone is, is a beautiful thing. Um, some misconceptions, though, here around the table tonight about drones, that I'd just like to clear up real quick. And, uh, when it warms up, any of you guys are invited to come out and fly my drone and see how it all works, it's a fun thing to do. But, uh, concern about privacy, um, issues flying a drone, there are no drones made, including commercial drones, that have zoom features on them. So when you're flying up in the air, everybody looks like a little ant. There's no way to, to zoom in and say, oh, look at, next door neighbor's sunbathing outside, let me zoom in on her, type of deal. Number two, they're very loud, if you have a drone flying overhead, you're gonna definitely hear it. But, uh, a fear of, of videotaping students, uh, they look like ants running around on the ground. It's, it's, right now, the way technology is, um, that's not a worry. Will it change in the future? I doubt it, I was at the Consumer Electronics Show in Las Vegas, uh, three weeks. Will it change in the future? I doubt it. I was at the Consumer Electronics Show in Las Vegas three weeks ago, and I saw the brand-new, heavy-duty commercial drones for movies, and they don't even have zoom features on them. You know, for, for movie people, if they want to get high and zoom out, they'll use a crane or a different thing to get those perspectives, but as far as the drone goes, they don't want to ruin their industry by having zoom on them, because then everybody will say, oh, my God, there's a drone in the sky, let's get the shotgun and blow it out, because it's videotaping us. And really, in reality, it's tiny people, you're way up in the air, if you're 400 feet in the air, and you see a little dot on the ground. And Mr. Fassala, I thank you for watching my videos of Bill Pond Park, it's, it's appreciated, but I just wanted to get those misconceptions out there, because it's really a lot less harmless than a lot of people make it out, because they've never flown one before. And again, when it warms up, if any of you guys want to fly it, see how it works, give me a call, I'll be happy to show it, thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the public wishing to come forward for public participation? Also, our phone lines are open at 860-665-8736. Okay. All right, we're gonna move to item I, remarks by board members, and a quick reminder that we then have executive session. Mrs. Ancona. Mr. Schulman.
Just briefly, I was at the January Ruth Chafee PTO or PTA meeting, I don't know which one it is, and, and I say it pretty much every time I'm at one, but it is incredibly impressive how much work those parents do on behalf of their school, and the teachers do in conjunction with the PTO, and, I mean, they're, they're moving tens of thousands of dollars a year into programs and activities to enrich the students' learning that we do not provide for them, so it, it, it really is great, and if any parents are, are watching, or will hear about this later, join your PTO. They don't require you to be involved at every single activity, but you can get involved in one. They, they just do so much for their schools, it's so impressive.
Thank you. Mrs. Stan? Mr. Sylvia? You're good? Mrs. Guyan?
Of course. Let's see, I have a couple of things. One, I, I'm a liaison to the Youth Adult Council, and they have their annual hoopla coming up in March, so I know last year, I have kids in middle school, so information coming home sometimes is sketchy. So, if your kids are interested in hoopla, look for it, ask about it, check the website, the school website, I think everything will be posted there, but information will be coming out. And then last night, I had the pleasure of being at the Martin Kellogg Orchestra Concert, and it was fantastic, as it always is. I can never, I'm always amazed by how much growth happens from the elementary school to the middle school, and then just each section of the middle school, it's profound. And at the end, they have their rock orchestra, which I loved, because they did OneRepublic and ACDC, and to hear, like, all those stringed instruments, they also, they have a drum and an electric guitar in there also, but it was really fun, and the kids were fantastic, so kudos to them.
Thank you. Mr. Tovell?
I'm fine.
Dr. Braverman? Hit your microphone.
Sorry. 13 students are enrolled at Central for classes for this semester, I've got their schedules, so I'm gonna like, talk to them, and make sure they're having a good time.
Awesome, thank you.
I'm sorry. Yes, 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 definitely.
Mr. Fassala, you're good, okay. All right, so I think we're at item J, executive session, okay, so the board will now meet in executive session? We have to make a motion to go into executive session, sorry.
Move we go into executive session?
Seconded by Mrs. Ancona, all of those in favor?
Aye.
Discussion about executive session? Sure, as the room clears up, yep, no problem. All those in favor?
Aye.
We're in executive session.